For a long period of time. Now Corona is here to stay for that. So it's high time that we start building our immunity. Because at least it will delay the process of immunization. Uh we've also been talking about herd immunity, which is community immunity. But uh many people in the community have to be actually be infected. Uh and be immune to SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19 and which is not going to be possible right now. The second part is about the vaccination, which is also under progress and therefore herd community uh uh community herd immunity is going to be taking some time. So if you're talking about health, what is health? WHO defines health as not merely absence of any disease, but a state of complete physical, mental and spiritual well-being. We have immense number of cases which are having mental health problems due to this lockdown of COVID-19. How do you know whether you're healthy? You need to have your assessments. Now there are three categories in there. The first is the inpatient COVID-19 patients who are already in the hospital. The second is the at-risk or quarantine people. And the third is the general population. For each of them, you need to have a assessment by A B C D method. That is your biochemical or biophysical methods, clinical methods or dietary methods have to be assessed. You also need to assess them by understanding their socioeconomic status and understanding their mobility profile, that is whether they're having poor mobility or not. In the body com- in the nutrition assessment, the body composition analysis is very important. Because it it will tell you about the progression of your health as well as your disease. It's really about the performance of whatever drugs you're giving, how the person is going to react. And of course, it tells you about appearance as well as longevity. Now these are the spectrum of body sizes and shapes and composition that have been evolved over the ages. So here we're talking about nutrition and immunity. So we need to know how to assess your diets. First, you need to assess either your past or your current intake. That can be done by several methods. The easiest is the seven-day diet recall method, the diary method, the twenty-four recall method or the food frequency method. After that, what we do is calculate the dietary diversity score. That is, how many food groups a person is eating? If the person is eating less than six food groups, he has a poor dietary diversity score. And therefore, these type of patients will require special nutrition care to avoid occurrence of low immunity and long-term diet-related diseases. In immunity, we have several reports which have shown that the senior citizens are actually getting infected. The deaths in Italy, the deaths in Spain have shown this all. So our immune system basically is capability uh response capacity reduces when the age, when they advance our age, right? And there's changes in the immune system translating to less effective innate and adaptive immune responses and increased susceptibility to infection. Our bone marrow also reduces its stem cells, which give rise to cells of the immune system. And all this is because of hidden hunger or we call it because micronutrient malnutrition. The entire presentation here will explain what is this micronutrient malnutrition or hidden hunger? And how is it linked with immunity? Stress, as I mentioned, is also a very important factor in building up your immunity. Because stress leads to poor gastric mobility and heartburns, stomach upsets, poor dietary intakes, increased heartbeats, which these small little generalized anxiety disorders are also converting into chronic stress these days because of the lockdown. And even strains the relationships between family, friends and affects your dietary habits also leading to immunity efficiency. So you need to have a little CBT theory along with good nutrition and good diet to actually improve your immunity. So are there any special foods to improve immunity? Yes or no? A well-balanced diet with good dietary diversity score leads to good immunity over years. Immunity cannot be developed overnight, as you said. You need to have wise choices from various food groups. Among your cereals, you have your wheat and rice, yes. But you need to include your millets, bajra, chowar, mukai, whatever is available in your area. You need to have your whole pulses like rajma, red gram dal, green gram, mug, chana, kathor basically. And all the dals in your diet every day. Now, the survey that we have done indicates that Indians are deficient in proteins. The starch study reported by Dr. Joshi et al. also says that Indians consume around seventy-five percent of starch, which actually is not good for you. You need to have local fruits and vegetables, you need to have your other vegetables and total amount of fruits and vegetables, which includes all the local wild, underutilized vegetables available in your area to the amount of four hundred to five hundred grams per day. So I'm going to teach you the seven basic essentials of a balanced diet. Adding these essential factors necessary for growth so that every part of the body gets what it needs to function properly. And it is indicative of proportional diet. It's not that you need to have only one food group in a very large quantity. You need to have right food items in proper amounts. And this balanced diet will not only boost your health, but also can help you maintain your weight. We have a National Institute of Nutrition, which have issued dietary guidelines for Indians. And they've categorized food into three different categories, that is energy-rich, bodybuilding food and protective foods. These foods in total actually are helpful for maintaining the immunity of the body. Because the energy-rich foods such as whole grain cereals and millets are rich in protein, fiber, minerals, calcium, iron and B complex vitamins. Vegetable oils, ghee, butter are rich in fat-soluble vitamins and essential fatty acids. Nuts and oilseeds rich in proteins, vitamins, minerals as well as essential fatty acids. And protein which we're talking about as bodybuilding foods are rich in B vitamins, invisible fat, fiber and so on and so forth. The most important part that we're talking about in building immunity are the vitamins and minerals because they are repository of phytonutrients, antioxidants, fiber and that helps in actually improving the immunity. So do we have a balance? How can you have a balanced diet in lockdown? Because there are so many people who are not able to eat what they usually used to eat. People are suddenly out of job, they don't have much money. Let's learn some important facts before I come to what people can eat. Indian thali is an example. You see, India is a hetero- India has a heterogeneous food habits. And each region is full of such beautiful recipes. India has so much of indigenous fruit and vegetables growing inside this country, which actually needs to be promoted. So everyone of you attending this webinar, it's my gentle request to you that you please go to the fair whenever you have a chance to meet a vegetable vendor or see a local farm. Please take photographs of local fruit and vegetable and promote them. Each one of it is full of goodness of say green vegetables, other vegetables, dal, you have some sweet dish, uh even potato vegetables, salad, dahi and rice. It has all the food groups and the quantity has to be monitored. Now what are carbohydrates? So carbohydrates, as I said, as I told you, that nutrients um make good balanced meal, right? So we're going to learn about some basic nutrients and the first of it is carbohydrates. If you are a healthy person, you can have around three hundred and ten grams of carbohydrates or around sixty percent of your total calories. And all you're going to eat, bhakri, uh breads or pastas, whatever you eat is a major part of your thali will have carbohydrate content in it. The next essential or I will say the saptapadi of a balanced diet after carbohydrate, the second padi is the vitamins. Now these are micronutrients which support metabolism, nerve function, muscle function, bone maintenance, cell production. And uh we have so many vegetables and foods in our country. Uh the forgotten saragwana, patta, the drumstick leaves. We are just eating the drumsticks but not the leaves, which is again a repository of so many nutrients, especially vitamin A, which improves your immunity. Then comes the minerals. Now minerals aid in the release of energy from the food items. Plus, they interact with the organs to promote growth. Example, iron helps with energy metabolism, calcium with bone metabolism and development, so on and so forth. However, we know that in India, especially in Gujarat, iron deficiency in India is a huge problem. NFH is one, two, three and now the unreleased four also show that our IDA is somewhere between fifty percent empty. We are having so many programs and policies, the NEETI program and other programs for improving iron deficiency. But it's not happening and we really need to have, why is it not happening and nutritional anemia is in total that has to be addressed. So then comes the fat. There are healthy fats, you need to have visible fat, only twenty-five grams of visible fat because most of the things which you'll be eating will be having invisible fat also in it, which includes your zinc, dana and dal, forgotten and has to be consumed in your diets daily because of the essential fatty acids present in them and also vitamin E content. The World Health Organization has developed some advisories and many posters are now available. And they also are promoting uh what foods to eat and what not to, what not to consume. The next padi we are talking about is the protein. Most important part because Indians are deficient in protein. We need to have fifty grams of protein in a typical adult meal. But when you look at a Gujarati thali, you will see that there is just a thin dal in that pakki. Why is that so? That the rotli, one thin watery samjik and a thin dal and little rice. Now where is the protein coming from? So please try and include lots of cereals and pulses and combine the cereals and pulses so that you get good quality protein if you are a vegetarian. And if you are non-vegetarian, Gujarat, the three-fourth of Gujarat has a coastline. That means there is more duck of fish and seafood in Gujarat. Consume it. Covid dietary diet nutritional advice for the Covid is well-balanced diet every day to get vitamins, minerals, dietary fiber, protein and antioxidants. And you need to have at least two cups of fruit, two point five cups of vegetables and hundred and eighty grams of grains and hundred and sixty grams of either meat or pulses in your regular diet. The next padi that we are talking about is fiber. Fiber or rasa is helpful in digestion. It is primarily concerned keeping your cholesterol levels in check. And you need to have around twenty-five to thirty-five, thirty grams of fiber per day. Now you don't need to have oats every day to get your fiber. You go to your local market and take all the available fresh green leafy vegetables, local fruits and that will contribute to both soluble as well as insoluble fiber that is required in your diet. Most important padi is the water. If you don't drink water in this hot summer, your systems are not going to be working because water hydrates and facilitates the movement of all other components. You need to have at least eight to ten cups of water every day. This is the nutritive value, these are the recommended daily allowances by the ICMR and IM group. And you need, these are the values for calcium and iron. But it is a pity that in this country, when we are talking about immunity, there is deficiency of iron, there is deficiency of calcium, there is deficiency of vitamin D, there is deficiency of B vitamins and even zinc found in the population. So already deficient population, we are talking about building immunity for Covid in them, which is a little difficult task but not, not impossible. Now this is what a Gujarati meal looks like. If you see, your naasta is papra jili, but dinner is vada pav, heplo chundho, pav bhaji, more to come. Chillet is samosa, pani puri, phalsa and chevda, chawana, bhakar badi. Now if you are going to fill up your stomach with your immune system and your overall health is definitely going to decline over a period of time. We are talking about three types of patient, as I said, the inpatient or at-risk quarantine patient or the general population. Now for the indoor patients, there is a separate set of protocol which I will not be talking in this presentation. We will be talking about general immunity boosters like protein, micronutrient and phytonutrient in this presentation. The first one, the amino acids. When you have a deficiency of dietary protein or amino acid, which we are, as I said, we have in our Indian population, especially the population of Gujarat, there is a possibility of impairing immune function. And there is an increased susceptibility of animals and humans to infectious diseases including Covid. Why? Because good amount or good quality of amino acids, proteins with amino acid, that is complete protein, definitely helps in activation of T lymphocytes, B lymphocytes, natural killer cells and macrophages. It also helps in cellular adox state, gene expression, lymphocyte proliferation and production of antibodies, cytokines and other cytotoxic substances. The three important amino acids which have had influence on immune systems are arginine, glutamine and cysteine precursors. Now we had a paper on Javardhan et al. who has done this very beautiful review on what are the various nutrients which have impact on various viral infections. And he has listed down that zinc, vitamin E, vitamin C, vitamin A, D and selenium copper along with some herbal products, probiotics as well as nutraceuticals have influence on viral infections. These are not papers on Covid but on other viral infections. We'll be dealing one by one. Now what happens to zinc? Zinc actually helps in growth development and maintenance of immune functions. The value of hundred and fifty milligrams per day is advised. When there is a deficiency, it has been shown that those people who are deficient in zinc have increased risk of infectious disease, including viral infections. They are increased risk of acquiring infections such as HIV or SCV. Uh NRCD on pneumonia patient also have shown that supplementation of zinc has improved the duration of illness. That is, there is a short stay in the hospital and there is an increase in cytokine response uh in the TH1 pattern. And supplementation of high zinc of hundred and fifty milligrams per day after stem cell transplantation also enhances the thymic function. The second nutrient is copper, which is again a micronutrient. Now copper around seven point eight kilograms per day have shown a reduced oxidant damage in patients and also has a crucial role in the, uh role in the development of immunity. Um when you look at the sources of copper, you see that regular food in Indian thali, your amaranth, bajra, barley, chowar, mukai, ragi, powa, rice all has bigger amounts of calcium, um copper as well as iron in the diet. So you don't need to have multivitamin supplements all the time. If you have access to any of these foods and if you know how to combine and take adequate quantity, you will be improving your immunity. The next is the selenium. Around five hundred to one thousand, there's a mistake here, one thousand microgram of selenium per day has been, there are various studies which have shown that it has an impact on the immune system in viral infections. Now the sources of selenium, again as you see, so many fruits are rich in selenium, especially the um the phalsa, which I don't think it is promoted in this country. There are local foods, learn to promote them, ripe papaya, every day papaya can be consumed. So we'll be talking about zinc and you see the fruits as well as these cereals are rich sources of zinc in the diet. Vitamin A, as I said, is an antioxidants. It has an ability to modulate post-immune function. And vitamin deficiency can impair both tumoral and cellular immunity. Vitamin E easily available in all the nuts and the oilseeds. So your till, wufali, which is available and consumed in our kitchen every day can be promoted during this Covid for improving the vitamin E deficiency. Now why are we talking about micronutrients like vitamin C or E or selenium or copper or zinc? Because they counteract potential damage caused by the reactive oxygen species. That is, they reduce our oxidative stress and therefore they have an effect on production of cytokines and prostaglandins and we have to eat them during this Covid nineteen. The sources, as I said, are from all foods which are available easily in the market and can be consumed by regular population. Now deficiency in micronutrients have been reported in Gujarat. We have, we have reported iron deficiency, iodine deficiency, B vitamin deficiency, C deficiency and these micronutrient deficiency basically suppresses the immune functions by affecting the innate T-cell mediated immune response and adaptive antibody response and leads to dysregulation of balanced post-response. Therefore, you need to have your micronutrients every day in the right amount as per the RDA. Because adequate micronutrients supports the T1 cytokine mediated immune response with sufficient production of pro-inflammatory cytokines. It maintains an effective immune response and avoids a shift to anti-inflammatory TH2 mediated immune response and increased risk of extra cellular infections. So the vegetables, the lemon or lime family, your milk products, your rajma, chana, these are the basic foods which have to be eaten in your diets every day. The next important nutrient is the vitamin C. Essential antioxidants again like vitamin E and selenium. It has enzymatic co-factor for many physiological reactions in the body. It helps in hormone production, collagen synthesis and immune potentiation. An essential factor for antiviral immune responses against influenza A virus which have already been reported. The next important nutrient for immunity is magnesium. Because it actually helps in immunoglobulin synthesis as immune cell adherence, antibody dependent cytokysis, human immunoglobulin M like lymphocyte binding and many other important factors. The other important thing is vitamin A and vitamin D. And vitamin A available in all yellow and orange fruits and vegetables. It is a mango season now. Please eat to your heart's content because vitamin A helps in immunity. Vitamin D, there is plenty of sunshine but we have vitamin D deficiency. It's a, it's a global public health problem now, vitamin D deficiency. Because you need to have calcium along with vitamin D for adequate absorption. So please ensure you have foods rich in vitamins, you have rich in, foods rich in vitamin C as well as calcium and then go out in your sunshine for twenty minutes and get enough of vitamin D in your diet. If you are deficient, please start with oral doses of vitamin D. The next important uh group which has found a role in immunity are the probiotics. What are probiotics? They are live microorganisms which confer a health benefit to the host, including the GI tract and when administered in the right. Now what are these probiotics? Your normal dahi, normal chaas, your pickles which you are making at home, okay? All this will give you probiotics. So any probiotic with any food with live bacteria is good for you in this era of Covid nineteen. So it's available in all and we have this very beautiful uh sys- um system of eating, drinking chaas or having dahi in a regular meals every day. But now when we are doing, what is the meal that in, uh it is eaten in Gujarat in the evening is bhakri and chaas. Somebody please unmute your mic. Chetna Kalaswab, Chetna Kalaswab, please mute your mic. So the next one that we are going to talk about is iron. Now iron there I request somebody to please unmute your mic.
Give me one.
Thank you. So the next nutrient that we are talking about is iron. Now I have been talking about iron because iron deficiency is a huge problem in this country and Gujarat is leading in iron deficiency though we are in NEETI program. And these are various mechanisms which show that how actually iron deficiency and inflammation and anemia have a reduced response in the immune system. So iron is basically uh it is responsible for both immunity, both types of immunity, the innate immunity as well as the adaptive immunity. And as I've been talking that we have state nutrition cell, which has so many programs, including the NEETI program. And we've been talking about just iron deficiency maybe at a, maybe in a different forum right now. But right now that is to be addressed if you want to boost your immunity. Now there are, as I said, mental health is also important these days in lockdown of Covid. So we have mood disorders, they have fights in the families, children are getting aggressive. So these mental or mood disorders and anxiety also lead to increased inflammation and cell damage. Antioxidants, fresh fruits and vegetable juices, selenium or rich pulses, nuts, animal products, mushrooms, seeds of your watermelon. Now we are having lots of watermelon and chakkar, chakkar date and tarbuch, whatever in the market these days. So please don't throw these seeds, you dry them, okay? And you can see on YouTube how to process, remove the skin, outer skin and preserve them because they are very, very rich source of your essential fatty acids and which are required and also for selenium. Uh micronutrient-rich fruits, uh of course these fruits are micronutrient-rich, but even the seeds are very important. So don't throw them because if you go and buy uh the musk melon or pumpkin seeds in the market, you pay around eight hundred to one thousand rupees per kilo, okay? So every day in a family of four, buy one watermelon and extract the seeds and put them in the sun. Take help of the sunshine which God has blessed India with, right? So other foods are bananas which regulate your blood pressure, electrolyte balance. Now bananas are also very cheap, thirty rupees a kilo. So I'm not advocating anything which is expensive, I'm not taking half apples a day. I'm talking about foods which are available in our country. And there are many iron within preparations also which are boosting immunity. So coming back to our Indian thali, if you are a non-vegetarian, this is the type of thali that you should be eating. If you are vegetarian, this is a type of thali that you should be eating. Look at the colors in the thali. These colors are natural colors, they are from turmeric. Another very, very important um food which is available in our kitchen. All the fruits, vegetables, dal, which is, this is a thali that you should be eating every day with dahi, green leafy vegetables and some portion of your cereal in the diet. Not pav bhaji or pani puri which has become, now these are another examples of uh so many different salads that you can make during this lockdown. You use your time to sit with your family and cook and innovate recipes which are rich. These are all tabolis. Now this is made from masur da. This is made from soaked chowar, soaked and boiled chowar and then flavored. This is from kidney beans or rajma. Then they're all flavored, it's not just meat too much, you had that, you are simple spices. You learn to make your own dips, like you make your tahini, you make your hummus, you make your honey mustard sauce and you can make your different chutneys, green chutney, imli chutney, tomato chutney. There are millions of recipes online on dips and chutneys. You make your different chutneys, you mix them with different fruits and vegetables and pulses. So you will have a protein-rich So you will have a protein-rich, fruit and vegetable-rich meal for you ready. Every day you have a new meal and it will be your immune booster meal. Another important part which is coming up is the nutraceuticals. Now nutraceuticals are product which claim a physiological effect on any chronic diseases. So we have isolated nutrients like any of which which I have mentioned earlier, selenium or iron or protein or amino acids, we have herbal products, we have dietary supplements, we have so many genetically engineered designer foods. We have specific diets and we have processed foods like now we have cereals, we have soups or beverages claiming a particular no benefit in the body. So some nutraceuticals have also shown promising results for enhancing immune functions in various viruses such as influenza and we are still testing on the coronavirus. So what kind of nutraceuticals are available with us, our masala dhabba? You see, in, aldi, mirchi, mustard, jeera, dhana jeero. All of this have proven abilities for improving the immune system. These are the various references to quote them. So whether you have access to fruit or vegetable or not, I am not sure. If you have access to your masala dhabba, if you have access to all your jeero, dhana jeero, all various types of masalas in your home, you can paratha and improve your immune too. You can also add them into water and consume it. You can also add them in your roti and make especially ajwain roti, jeera roti and consume it. So you need to consume lots of these spices and condiments in your regular diet these days. These are again WHO advisories about what you should be eating. And it is always good to cook at home and eat homemade fresh food. I know swiggi and zomato is now available, online restaurant orders are also available, but try and cook at home. Important part that since Deepi ma'am has mentioned that my primary area of interest is antioxidants in health and disease and maternal and childhood. So if a mother is now pregnancy and breastfeeding or lactation is a huge question mark. We have studies that mother, it is safe for mother to feed, breastfeed the child. Why? Because human milk has many bioactive compounds which affect immunity, immunity. Example, your cytokines, growth factors, hormones, digestive enzymes, transporters and antimicrobial factors. You please ensure that there is exclusive breastfeeding for any mother. Whether she is in quarantine or whether she is in the hospital and ensure that pehla ghanta, the first milk is fed, breastfeeding is done with beating first hour of the birth. So there are videos of breast crawl, there is videos about grooming in kangaroo mother care, skin to skin contact. So whether the mother is having a normal delivery or whether the mother is having a cesarean delivery. You have to see that the child is put on mother's breast as soon as the child is born in the labor room itself, right? So the COVID nineteen advisory by the WHO also says that the mothers have to breastfeed the child. Of course she needs to practice the food safety concerns about washing hands and other things, but she has to feed the child. Now there are various food safety concerns which I'm not going to deal in details because they are available very freely on every media these days. The CDC, FDA and our Indian F S S I also have many such charts and posters which are available freely on the internet. We have the new Ayush guidelines by the government which has also emphasized our nutraceuticals, our masala dhabba like aldi, jeera, dhanya, lasol and you have to improve your daily diets with these in the cooking. Of course chamomile, the age-old tested immune booster should be taken. And all the herbal treaties as I said, you can have your water, you have to have your water. So when you make your water, you please ensure that it is made for the whole family, the herbal water. So you can have a five liter tapelli in the morning, add whatever decoction, material you want to add. Your jeera, dhanya or yitulsi, mint and then boil it and let the whole family use that water throughout the day. Okay, and then of course the golden milk which Ammu has now started marketing. The yellow chomri latte which is now adopted by the whole world is our grandmother's recipe. It is a very much Indian recipe. So please revive our own customs and traditions and please drink milk. If you do not like milk or you have a problem with the lacte, lactogen, sorry, the lactic acid issues, then you please see that you have honey aldi and no diet. So are there any superfoods for boosting immunity? No, they are all available in your kitchen. You have to realize the potential and consume it in your diet. Here there are various references to prove what I said right now. And here are some more suggestions as I said, you have bone butter with lime when you wake up. You have to put garlic with water. You can also have as I said, fenugreek or a carrom or fennel or turmeric or turmeric powder in the water and use it throughout the day. You can have coconut water, valiari water, fennel water, gulcan water throughout the day. You can make fresh vegetable soup. So basically you need to keep this part hydrated. So you need to have lots of milk mix and hot foods or hot drinks so that this part is hydrated and there is something hot going down the throat all the time. So try different soup recipes and Indian rasam is something which I would recommend in this COVID nineteen because it is it is, I don't know how many you have tried, but it is a combination of, beautiful combination of so many spice mixes along with tomatoes and a bit of protein dal, okay? And vegetable raitas which is a combination of probiotic and a prebiotic mix. Protein salads as I said, I have given you some examples as pictures in the morning, please try and consume it. Now simple things have to be made interesting. Like if you're making a carrot soup, you need to have some greens in it. If you're having a musk melon or a shakkar date, have some udina patta in it. Grow a little kitchen garden, we have lot of time now. And we have so many pots as like you have boostless, these containers available in the house, maybe plastic containers. So you can grow your methi, you can grow your ajwain, you can grow your mustard, you can grow your, what is it? Sesam, tal, if every day in your, and that can be consumed by your, by your family every day. Involve your children to grow these plants and vegetables, they will be free of Corona because they have grown by you, you will definitely love them. Because they are grown by you and if you go to consume, they will definitely bring a lot of goodness of these grains inside your body. So this is, these are the pictures shared by my friend, Dr. Vandana Agarwal. And this is her kitchen garden, okay? She has grown mint and aloe vera, there is kadi patta. There are so many rosemary and so many different kitchen gardens which she has grown inside the house. And every day we need to have just say twenty leaves of mint, one mukti of leafy vegetables is something which you have to eat every day. Hundred grams, so you can get it from your own kitchen garden and consume it. So go and promote, local gardening is what I'm going to promote. Don't go to the stores and buy, I've seen people rushing in B mat and buying like basket full of biscuits and maggi and noodles and all processed foods, curry, whatnot, please out, never, you please avoid all processed foods. For jams and food juices and biscuits, cakes, pastries, cookies, they are all fat, full of trans fat and sugar. So there are high fat, high sugar products, you need to avoid them. You have to enjoy a combination of vegetables and fruits along with good quality of proteins. And please use your kitchen spices and condiments to make your own recipes, okay? And that is going to boost your immunity. So good nutrition is basically essential to build resilience and immunity. And a healthy immune system is most important weapon against the viral infections including COVID nineteen. There are two tests that this COVID nineteen is going to take on us. Number one is a test on the health system and the second one is a test on the food system. Now you know that every day we are evolving process and guidelines for improving our health system. But it is a pity that yes, we have a good P D A system and distribution of food to all the necessary people who are standard and don't have access to food. But why are we not having a immune boost, immune boosting guidelines in the country, which is a big problem now, okay? So we need to see that food and nutrition security is maintained during COVID nineteen. Now what is this food and nutrition security? It is not just access to food or availability of food or utilization of food or stability of food. It is giving food with proper nutrients in it, okay? So our hidden hunger, the micronutrient part is also have to be taken care of in improving food and nutrition security during this COVID nineteen. As mentioned earlier, the state nutrition cell is doing wonderful. We have so many different programs in it. Try and promote, try and promote good nutrition, local nutrition to all. Whether it is a pregnant mother, whether it is a lactating mother, young children under five, even adolescent boys, girls, adult and geriatric population, everybody will require good immune system. So it is just not your target group of SAM management or you know whatever MA program that you are handling. You have to ensure that you provide knowledge of good nutrition to the population at large. India is doing wonderful as I said, the, our Corona warriors are doing wonderful in giving supplies of nutrition. They are the Anganwadi systems are the backbone of the country's fight under, under nutrition. And but we have recent reports that what is going to happen after the lockdown. Because poor diets are reported in this country and today's P M message, today is a very good auspicious days of good polima. Today's case are, we see there is so much of rise in death tolls, death tolls in this country, okay? So this presentation was a part of paper submitted to the Blackshire Crafting Centre in University in US. And my question again is coming back to you, which is what are we going to have next after this COVID nineteen lockdown effect is over? Because globally malnutrition is one of the leading causes of mortality, including infection and mortality under children, for children under five years of age. Which is also a time to ponder. So it is not just COVID nineteen of immunity that we will talk, we have to address malnutrition and because this country malnutrition is a huge problem. So thank you, I close my presentation with that. If you have any other queries you can write to me. My email ID is vanisha.nambyar-fn or dot, dash fn@msugarodha.com.
Thank you very much Dr. Vanisha madam for a wonderful session on nutrition and how to improve immunity. Now we will move on to question answer session. Our participants have already started asking questions.
Can I see the, I can't see the screen of the questions.
Questions will be visible to all, I'll share the screen. There are so many.
Yeah. So, let me see the questions.
Okay, so there are so many feedback from participants for excellent presentation.
Thank you so much.
Term nine, Dr. Rajesh Kumar sir. Participants are requested to mute their audio. Participants are requested to mute their audio. There are so many feedback madam.
Okay. Okay, is my share screen stopped or it's still there?
It is not there ma'am because my screen is being.
Oh great, so ma'am I cannot see all the questions, so can you ask the question so that I can answer?
Yes.
Will you be the moderator?
Yes, yes. Doctor MC Trivedi is asking. Doctor MC Trivedi is asking, are you doing any research on micronutrients and immunity against COVID nineteen?
So to do any research, we have to have ethical clearance. And but what we have done right now is we have done, I have done is a research paper on immunity and COVID nineteen. But I have immense work done on micronutrients earlier, especially on iron, beta carotene, that is vitamin A precursor. And we've done lot of dietary assessments from populations including pregnant mothers, lactating mothers, children, school children and even adult population. So we have general data on diet, dietary patterns and consumption patterns in India and in Gujarat.
Kethika Shah wants to know where is the source of zinc?
So as I already mentioned, if you have whole grain cereals and pulses, you will have your zinc, okay?
Role of auto immunity especially micronutrients in relation to I think question is not clear, I request this participant to please rewrite the question, complete question. Role of auto immunity, what do you want to ask? We will take next question from D T C Papra. Thank you madam for information.
I can't hear.
Yes.
It's very poor.
Ayurvedic ukkada containing condiments, masala etcetera increases immunity, that is right, okay?
Yes, I have already said that, I have told you your masala dhabba has so many ingredients which boost immunity. We have so many research papers and I have given you a slide on the references that are used. We have references on ginger, on turmeric, on chumin, that is jeera, on ajwain. They are all available in our kitchen and they help in improving our immune.
Then there are more compliments and feedback, positive feedbacks from participants. Participants, if you have any question, you can write in Q and A. Section Q and A, you will find out in a three dotted icon on your screen, there is a three dots icon on your screen. You can write your question in Q and A, that is there inside that icon. Tamari screen upper, round dot, what is the icon, any other tamne Q and A no option more she, eh, tematame, tamara saval laki shakuj. If you find difficulty in writing a question in Q and A, you can also write in chat box. There is one question in chat box, non-veg can be eaten during COVID crisis? Ma'am, you are not audible.
Hello, yes. Okay, so non vegetarian foods can be consumed during COVID nineteen if you follow proper protocols of handling non vegetarian foods. And you know the source of the non vegetarian food. So you have to wash them, wash your hands, keep them separate from other foods. There are cooking guidelines for non vegetarian foods, which is available on our F S S A I website. So you please download and enjoy your non vegetarian food items even in COVID nineteen.
Uh Pankaj Patel and Nithin Devadia both are asking same thing. Tell us five common vegetables and fruits rich in antioxidants that can be con- consumed by poor people in our country.
Okay, so I have given so many examples during my presentation, but I will mention that again. First and foremost, it is a season of moringa drumstick. May is a time when you cut the fields of drumstick, okay? After you take out the singh. So by May end, the whole field is cut, take those leaves. So moringa leaves or saradwana pan is something which is easily available and consumed. What other things that are available in the market? Mangos are available now in the market. Your local ringra, again rich in anthocyanins, okay? All your fruit and vegetables which have color have antioxidants. Whether it is beta carotene or buty, or nicopin, zia zanthine, these are all antioxidants. So you can get your buty and buty from all the green leaf vegetables. You get your nicopin from your tomato or anything which is red in color, yeah? So you go to the market, check the color. Any natural color fruit and vegetable will have antioxidants in there.
Snehal Kumar Patel is asking regarding drumstick. With drum drumstick, regular tablets, ni effect par koi osar aave chhe?
No, there is no effect, but see, this is a very vague question. Because everything you have to have in a limit. So how much are you consuming, with what are you consuming, what are the food composition and bioavailability? All these matter when you eat food, yeah? So we have my own papers, if you Google Vanisha Nambyar, you'll see so many papers on drumstick leaves, okay? So drumstick leaves are excellent sources of antioxidants. And as I say, you just need one piece of drumstick, fresh drumstick leaves. Now if you cannot, drumstick has around seventy to eighty percent moisture. That means if you have around ten to twenty grams, which is not possible powder form of drumstick. So how much can you actually eat in one serving is what you need to calculate and consume. But you uh see in India, that's the best part. We do our penu greek methi leaves, odina. All this is naturally dried, shade dried in our country. So same way you can also do shade drying of drumstick leaves and avoid taking tablets from sources which are unknown. Why? Because metallic contamination and heavy metal infestation has been reported in several Ayurvedic formulations. So to avoid that, you make your own product, products and powders and cook at home, okay?
Hemangini is asking how to achieve uh household dietary diversity in resource poor families?
Okay, very good question Hemangini. Uh what happens is dietary diversity, as I said, will you have? We have listed of eight, nine, ten food groups depending on what kind of populations we are assisting. Now you have to have a diverse diet. If you are a poor household, first food group is your cereals. So take whichever local cereal is available, macai, bajri, jowar, rice, wheat. So that's one food group done. Local fruit and vegetables, suran, yams, sweet potato, chakriya, bataka. All that also comes in that food group. Then the second food group is dal. What is a local dal available? As I said, the Gujarat, there is a seventy-five percent of Gujarat is a coastline. If you are a non vegetarian, take the fish, dry the fish, keep it for a whole year. You can consume it and improve your protein content. If not, eggs are there, otherwise whatever local dal is available, that is the second part. Vegetables, I have told you, there is, India has no problem of vegetables. If you are eating cauliflower, the cauliflower green can be consumed. If you have any like beetroot, beetroot green, kachar, gajasva green. So why are we throwing it away? So that even the mutton or the tuwe, the leaves of those are very, very rich in nutrients and antioxidants which can be consumed. Now the whole world or whole India, I would say amol doodh pita hai India. So Gujarat is a saga of with milk. Please consume it, milk in form of curd, chaas or espanil or as coa and enjoy your meals. Spices, condiments, I've already mentioned. So it is not difficult for any poor family to maintain their food security or dietary diversity. The problem is about knowledge. They think that drumstick tree, only the singh can be consumed, not the leaves. So it is available in plenty in the farms. If you go to the farm, there are, there are so many availability of um as I said, underutilized fruits and vegetables, you please promote them. Our Indian gooseberry, amla, our Indian boar. There are twenty types of Indian boar, okay? You don't need to have cherries or apples. You promote these, whether they are chani boar or they are huge boar. The boar has lot of vitamin C in it. So that is an antioxidant, consume our guava. They are the best source of vitamin C and they improve availability of iron in the diet. So use it.
Uh Dr. Rajesh Gopal sir wants to know about any studies for assessing the role of nutritional supplements for boosting the immunity in PL HIV, people living with HIV AIDS, are there?
Yes, I, um the paper that I have presented and the nutrients that I have listed, they are all having important role in virals, including the HIV. So what are these nutrients? There is vitamin C, there is vitamin E, there is selenium, there is copper, there is manganese, okay? And vitamin A and D, they all have proven role in improving HIV. So basically, you need to check the nutritional status of the population and based on their deficiency, if you have supplementation of multiple micronutrient, because you can't be giving a single dose to these people. So what we do is multiple micronutrient supplementation is advised. But as I said, case specific decisions have to be made. But these are the general nutrients which have shown an improvement in boosting immunity in various viral infections, including HIV.
Sir is also sharing his email ID, so if you can share it with us ma'am, we will send it to Dr. Rajesh Gopal, this study. Uh DTC Bhavna is again asking about the poor middle class people which madam has already covered. Uh.
See, I want to, sorry, I want to exercise one thing. If you have, just look at one diet profile of a village, say rotlo, dungri, dilu marchu and maybe a thing chaas, okay? Now, if you, if I do an analysis of what is this? The rotla, bajri rotla, when we did our study in Banaskatha. We saw that one bajri rotla had around three hundred grams of ba- uh three hundred grams of atta. It was huge, okay? That is consumed by one person. There is a vegetable, maybe the local green dungri vegetable is available. So green onion or whatever local is there, but it's a green vegetable. Then they have two or three green chilies and they have one big kanda. And they have some chaas. So you will have your probiotic in your chaas. When you're having your bajri, you'll have your zinc, you have your, of course you have your energy, a bit of protein and iron. You'll have your antioxidants in the form of your other vegetables and phytonutrients in the onions. So it is thought that a poor man is having a very deficient diet. But yes, during COVID nineteen, this diet can definitely continue. It is will, it will be sustainable also and it will provide them health also. But over a period of time, they can definitely change the amounts of vegetables or type of vegetables which is there and try include a protein source besides chaas in their diet, which will improve their overall nutrient value also, okay?
Pooja Nai wants to know the rich source of copper.
I've already mentioned it in my presentation ma'am.
If participants who have joined late, they can refer this presentation, this webinar again in YouTube channel of SIFW Vododra. This will be uploaded tomorrow on YouTube channel of SIFW. So you can again revisit this session whenever you want. Maya Jaria is asking, is it necessary to drink hot water throughout the day?
You can't be drinking hot water because of the summer, okay? But at least try and see, I would advise, please do it, but not hot, warm, lukewarm water. Because it is, it will help you in your thoughts. But at least when you wake up in the morning, you should have to, before you sleep, you have to. And in between, try and have warm water. If not, cook hot food and drink like hot grassam, hot soup and maybe hot khichdi with hot curry or things like that.
Uh then comes the question on oils, which cooking oil is heart friendly?
Well, I can talk for two hours when you talk about oil. Uh we can have a special session on that. Actually, there are three things when we cook, when we talk about oil. There is the calculation of the saturated fatty acids or monounsaturated fatty acids or polyunsaturated fatty acids. When you have a coconut oil, we talk about the saturated fatty acids. When you have a palm kernel oil, you have saturated and fatty acids. All your chips, you read the labels. They will say palm oil, okay? So India got palm for improving the vitamin A status of the population maybe in the nineties. But now what is happening is we are not making the oil from the fruit. We are also getting from the palm kernel, which is having very, very bad quality of fat. So the oils that we are having in Gujarat is the kapas ya nu tail, which is the most horrible oil anybody can ever have. Because you have, you have to look at the pusa and use a composition. So because if you want to say a poor man cannot afford other oils, you have to have your kapas ya, have little bit of singh tail also, have little bit of sarsu tail also, have little bit of sisam tail also. So buy three or four types of oil, combine oil or what we call is blending of oil. Only then you will get a good composition. And I said, this is a huge topic and I think with limited time, I can talk only this much at this point of time.
Um can hypertensive patient have chavan prash?
Of course, because chavan prash, as I said, is a mixture of amada and so many different spices and condiments. So definitely you can have. Uh in hypertension, micronutrients have a very, very positive role in hypertension.
Anish Ahmed is asking, in Roja, how to maintain immunity is very important.
Okay, great. So I had a webinar two days ago where we had this whole diet in Ramadan only. And I would love to give you the summary of that. In Roja, when you break your fast, you can have maybe two or three khajur. Don't drink too much of water because you fasted the whole day. So first you need to have a bit of calories so that there is some, so you start your day with khajur. Little bit of water, then you start some soups, okay? That soups can be made from mixture of green leaf vegetables and not those thick creamy soups available in the market. So make your soups at home with all the mixed vegetables, green leaf vegetables and tomatoes or dudi or palak and make it tasty and interesting. After that have some uh protein rich salads, as I've shown you in the pictures, with different dressings. Salads, why Indians don't love salads? It is because of, salads are called kachumbers and kachumber only small quantity is eaten. Uh so convert it into a feast. The salad can be prepared by variety of soaked and boiled pulses. You can make salads from sprouts, you have, and then various dressings can be made. And add lot of different salad materials like carrots, cucumber, tomato. So that is another source of antioxidants. So we have our antioxidant when we started our dates, when we had our soups, we had our salads. Then comes the main meal in Roja. So you can have your meat or mutton or fish or chicken, whatever you want to have. You can have your biryani, which has loads of these vegetables and your chicken or whatever non veg food that you want to have. And please remember the last meal that you're eating before going to sleep should not be a very heavy meal. Make it a lighter meal and in this way you can maintain your immunity as well as your energy level for the next whole day of Roja, okay? Thank you.
Uh so ma'am, we have covered all the questions from our participants. Uh now it's time to close the session. We are very much thankful to you ma'am, almost five hundred participants are benefited uh because of this session. And this is because Dr. Chandres Pandya sir has taken initiative and suggested that uh Nambyar Madam should be called upon. I would request Dr. Pandya sir is already there in panelist. So I would request Dr. Chandres Pandya sir to say few words for the participants and our panelists.
Thank you very much, Liti Wan. Uh and then thank you very much, Nambyar Madam. Very good presentation and excellent comprehensive presentation, not only for the nutrition during COVID, but the important aspect of pregnant woman, lactating woman, children and older age groups. And 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 lastly, the question answers are also very well covered. We will invite you further if participant wants specific nutrition related queries. And thank you very much, madam, for giving your time for wonderful presentation. And everybody will be benefited by your webinar on nutrition. And again, currently nutrition is another important hot topic. After this lockdown will be over, lot of nutrition problems will be arising. So your guidance will be helpful to the state as well as our participants also. Thank you very much and thank you SIW to organize such uh webinars.
Uh our pleasure sir and your guidance that has made it possible. Uh we are very much thankful to Dr. Vanisha and Nambyar Madam for a wonderful presentation to our participants. Uh there are so many feedback from participants, positive feedbacks and they are very happy. Uh they are uh very appreciating your presentation, PowerPoint presentation also. We are thankful to our participants also for active interaction in question answer session with our panelists. And thank you very much, everybody. Now it's time to end this webinar. See you soon in next session, special session webinar next week. Thank you, everybody. Yes, ma'am, you want to share some closing remarks?
I just want to thank you, thank you, Liti ma'am, and thank you, Chandres sir, for having me here. Uh being a nutritionist, it is always a pleasure. And being a public health nutritionist, it is always a pleasure to reach maximum population. And as a teacher, um teaching is my passion, training is my passion. And during this lockdown, I have been doing series of these webinars of teaching and training. And I really love working and training the audience. So I hope they are benefited and thank you for all the positive feedback. As I said, what I presented is just a tip of the iceberg. Nutrition is a huge vast topic and if you maintain good health, you will not go to the hospital. That means Hippocrates has said that let food be thy medicine and not medicine be thy food. So eat well, stay healthy, stay safe, stay at home. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, madam. We would love to hear you again when your time permits ma'am. So, thank you ma'am. We are ending this event now.